Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village of Altamont Planning Board Meeting. It is Monday, December 28, 2020 at 7:02 PM. Just for the record, this meeting is being held remotely and both the audio and video portions of the meeting are being recorded. My name's Deb Haxton, the Planning Board Chair. And would everyone else on the planning board like to introduce themselves?
Sure.
Damn it.
Sorry, Dan. John Huke.
Steve Caruso.
Simon.
Simon Litton.
And I know Barb is going to be joining us at some point. We also have tonight representing us Allison Phillips, our village council, Lance Moore, our building inspector, Ginger Hannah, our planning board secretary, and Dean Whalen, the village board liaison. At this time, I suppose we can get started. The first agenda item is to review the concept hearing for the proposed subdivision located at 130 Main Street by Troy Miller. Troy, you want to give us a quick scenario of what's going on there and what you have planned? And then we can get on with some questions of ours.
Sure. So recently purchased 130 Main Street, which is a two-family. And then we are looking to subdivide the lot. And it seemed to line up very well with meeting the minimum frontage. It does open up in the back. But our intentions are to kind of continue the row-style housing that is on Main Street.
Okay. Do you plan on building next to the house or behind the existing two-family?
My intentions are to build right along, you know, keep consistent with what's happening currently on the road. When I say my intentions, meaning if I have a buyer who wants to say move it back a little bit, I don't know. But if I was building it without a buyer, I would put it along the road as if, you know, it was consistent with all the other houses.
Okay. That's kind of a, you know, a key point as to where you plan on doing this in order for us to review it correctly.
Well, does it really matter?
It does.
Why is that?
If you're going to build behind it, there are questions still remaining as to whether or not it's a keyhole lot.
It's not a keyhole lot.
You say that? Go ahead, John.
A keyhole lot doesn't meet the minimum requirements on the front. I meet the requirements. For example, if you lived in a place that had 100-foot frontage, but your lot happened to get deeper in the back, it's not a keyhole lot. You meet the requirement at the front, and it just gets wider in the back. But the person has the right to build anywhere they would like in a compliant plan.
Our zoning code says that a keyhole lot is that it's located to the rear of another lot, but is connected to a public road by a strip of land at least 30 feet wide. Now, how does what you say conform with what our code says?
I don't know. But I mean, I've certainly talked to council. There's no question that if you meet, for example, if you cut the back of it off, you have a rectangular lot that's 50 foot in frontage, which is the minimum frontage. And therefore, you have a compliant lot, not a keyhole lot.
If you're building a front, that's not a problem. But if you're building in back with that road going in, then as far as what the code says, I think it's a keyhole.
Hang on a second, John. And Troy, if that's where you're going to build right next door, then yes. If that strip of land meets our code, which it does for an R-10. And that's why I'm trying to figure out whether or not you're building, you plan on just using that strip as an access point to build in back of the existing structure? Or if you're going to build right next to that existing structure? And yes, it's a buildable lot, and it does meet our code. So that's why I'm trying to get some clarification on where the intent is to build this.
My intent is to build it on the front, but we're intending it on someone that I don't know who it is yet. So if I met with someone and they wanted to build in the rear of that lot, we have the right to do that.
Allison, what's your view? You're on mute.
Thank you. When I look at this, you know, I do agree that, you know, when I look at our definition of keyhole lot, and when you kind of harmonize it with other sections of our zoning law that deal with the regulation of keyhole lots, I think the concept that, you know, kind of I'll call it the strip of land that provides access to the public road. If that is buildable in itself, I don't think that we would consider it to be a keyhole lot under our zoning law. But that doesn't mean that that lot doesn't have to be developed in accordance with the applicable area and bulk requirements for the R-10 zoning district. And one of those requirements is a maximum front setback. And in the use, or I'm sorry, the area, the table of area and bulk regulations, applicable district by district, it talks about, you know, if you're constructing on a vacant lot, you should have a minimum front yard depth equal to the average front yard depth of existing dwellings located within 300 feet of each side lot line of that lot. So I think, you know, if we are in agreement that the strip is buildable, then I think, you know, this is not a keyhole lot, but you are subject to the requirement that the maximum front yard setback basically be in accord with existing structures on either side. So I think to accord with those regulations, you're going to be required to build in that section adjacent to the other houses. I don't think you can elect to set the house back, you know, behind the existing structures on either side without some kind of variance from the zoning law, from that provision in the existing area table.
That's totally fine. But I just, the fact of the matter is it's not a keyhole lot. I'm not asking for a keyhole lot. And I'll build in accordance to wherever I'm allowed to build when I apply for the building permit.
Perfect. And that's what I was just trying to get to, Troy, is that, you know, if you're using that strip of land strictly as an access point, that could have been, you know, an issue. But if, and you do, and that's why I was trying to get you to say, yes, I plan on building in that little strip, because that is a buildable.
I do plan on building wherever I'm allowed to build.
Okay. All right. I know, John, you had some issues. Does anyone else, Barb, Steve, Simon, Dan? Anybody else have any other questions regarding what we're hearing?
I haven't.
I don't.
Deb, I don't have any either at this point.
I have a very minor question here. I'm not sure what the answer is. But I know there are some areas that are probably, probably should have been designated as wetlands in the village. They're not designated on the state maps. And I'm wondering if we have any sense, whether Troy does or anyone else does, of whether the back of that property is conceivably a wetland.
It certainly doesn't show any vegetation of wetland.
So you've seen that in the growing season, that with two feet of snow on top of it.
Yeah, there's no snow on it right now.
Oh, all right. Well, it's not visible to the public, of course. All right. So you've seen that. But a broader question is whether we have any ability to determine where wetlands are within the confines of the village. Does anybody know that?
Lance?
Jeff Muller will know. The only one I know.
Can I excuse myself for one second? I just have to go to the restroom. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Guys, I'm sorry. I tried to get on, and it kept saying connecting, connecting. So I did that through the email. And then I went to the village site and tried there. And again, it just kept going, connecting, 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 connecting. So Judy was very kind and called me. And so that's why I apologize. I don't know. Crazy.
You know, that's happened to me, Barb, and I just always do the magical solution, reboot.
Oh, I didn't even think about that. Yes.
Reboot, turn it, and don't just restart it, totally turn it off and turn it back on.
Okay.
That usually works. That's happened to me another of times.
Right. Interesting. It's also interesting about the wetlands to see.
Yeah, I think if you go on the Albany County GIS site, it shows there's a layer of designated wetlands. And it's very distinguishable if there's anything I haven't looked, see? But it would be good to check that.
Well, there was a wetlands training put on by the Capitol District Planning, whatever, the other day that I attended. And one of the interesting things that the presenter said was that the wetlands designated by the state only account for about half the area within the state. And that it's really up to the local municipalities to investigate what's in their areas.
Hmm.
This is Dan. My experience with wetlands is what you're saying is correct with DEC wetlands. They have to be 12.4 acres or larger to be mapped unless they're significant wetlands. But wetlands are also subject to the Corps of Engineers jurisdiction under Section 404. And any property owner that fills jurisdictional wetlands that are delineated by the Corps of Engineers would be subject to a permit. They're not mapped, the federal wetlands. So the property owner would be responsible regardless of whether it's a private individual or a commercial business or whatever to get a permit if they fill in federal wetlands. And they don't need to be mapped. So I don't, and I don't understand the question because I didn't know the, I'm not aware the village has any authority to have wetland rules or regulations.
Oh, that's what I understood from the training. And perhaps I'm wrong on that.
But municipalities that I'm aware of that have jurisdiction have the authority delegated down to them. And Altamont doesn't have that, as far as I understand. I'm not aware of too many municipalities, you know, in New York that have that authority.
Delegated by whom?
DEC or the Corps of Engineers. I'm not aware of it occurring in New York.
Well, one good thing is that this, you know, once it gets to that point, these questions are asked in SEACR. So, you know, we do have that. And I think that's an important point to remember. And if I know anything about the way Troy builds, you know, I'm sure he will cross his Ts and dot his Is when it comes to something like that, especially if he knows that it's a concern of the board.
You know, and I'll just add also, you know, what Simon was saying is true is that the way we regulate wetlands in New York State is that the DEC has to map those wetlands. And they are subject to this minimum acreage requirement. There also has to be other certain criteria for the DEC to actually map a wetland. And that's what gives them jurisdiction to regulate. It's got to be on their mapping. And in New York, we also have regulated buffer area around those maps. But there are other wetlands that are subject to regulation under federal law, and they're regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers. And those are shown on maps. You know, when you do, when you do an EAF or you use the DEC's environmental resource mapper, there's actually another layer that it will show you federal jurisdiction wetlands. It's a little different in that, you know, the jurisdiction doesn't come from the fact that they're on a map, but they do collect information for where these things are located. And if you're in a place that, you know, maintains a GIS database of these locations, you can oftentimes see them on a map. But that doesn't mean, you know, as Dan said, a property owner isn't absolved from, you know, not the fact that there isn't a federal wetland shown on the map in your backyard doesn't mean there isn't one there. And so if there's any question based on vegetation or the presence of, you know, factors which would be indicative of a wetland, you're supposed to get a jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps before you go in there, fill it, or drain it, or do anything like that. So it is kind of, you know, if you go on the DEC's environmental resource mapper, you will see a layer that shows a map of federal wetlands. But it doesn't mean that's all of them. And if you don't see one on your property, that doesn't mean there's not one there. But the DEC, every wetland that they regulate is on a map. It's got to be by law.
Yeah. Well, the point I'm making is that there are wetlands that are not on their map. And so do we have any way to deal with that?
You know, my understanding of how they maintain the DEC's database is when people obtain jurisdictional determinations from the Army Corps or through field investigations, there are wetlands delineated. That information can be collected and added to their database so that they can then show it on a map. I don't know that there's any kind of local data collection that DEC relies on to update those maps. You know, it's something that we could look into. I don't know if that, you know, as we process an application, say, in the Village of Altamont, that you do an in-depth, you know, kind of seeker analysis. And as part of that, there's a wetland delineation. Do you then keep that and report that delineation to DEC so they can include it in their database? We can look into that. And that may be what they mean by kind of local assistance in collecting.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Stephen Walrus did the land surveying. And if anybody would know it, he would know, or Jeff Muller. And Stephen didn't share that with me at all, so.
Yeah. Well, I'm not saying that there isn't one there. It's just that I'm really new on this board. And the other things that we looked at are properties that are very visible. And this is not.
Yeah. Because I had that same question on a recent partial by Carl Schilling. You know him, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I had a question because there is water in the back of that. And Steve knew exactly, you know. And then I talked with Jeff Muller, and he says, that's actually not a wetland.
It's an old mill pond.
Right. They stopped him from squirting in.
Good point, Simon. Thank you. You know, and this is, this is a good thing about a pre-concept hearing. These are the points that we say to Troy, this is something we want you to bring back next time. Troy is, you know, we want, we want, you know, you to show that this is not wetland. Or, you know, when we review the SEACR, we want to make sure that we focus on something such as that. That's why it's good to have something like this. We get these questions out there first, and it's not back and forth every month. Troy, are you back yet?
I'm here.
Okay. Did you hear, did you hear the wetlands discussion for the most part?
Yeah, I did. I mean, just by experience, I feel like it's a moot point specific to this. But I'll certainly get someone of qualified ability to get together that information.
Right.
That's what I figured. And, you know, again, it's on the SEACR, so, you know, we'll review it at that time as well. You know, it's not a normal thing at a pre-concept hearing. But if there's anybody out there, I believe in getting the questions out to the applicant so that they don't have to keep coming back and forth a number of times. If a question can be asked tonight, and the answer can be given to us by the next meeting instead of the next meeting, and then the next meeting, and the next meeting. So Troy, if you're okay, if there's anybody out there that has a question for?
Absolutely.
Is there anybody that's on the meeting from the public that would like to ask a question? No?
No, I, Deb, I have a question for Troy, if I can. And it relates to this concept plan that I'm looking at now that was attached to our agenda. I had seen in prior correspondence, and it, you know, that there was another concept plan that may have shown a reservation or an exception, you know, that's in the title for a public road on this, on this lot in the area that we were talking about previously, where, you know, we would, you would actually be doing the building footprint. Is there, you know, do you have, can you kind of explain to us? Has that issue been resolved? Or is there still a question of the title, whether or not there's a road reservation or exception on this parcel? Because it's not shown on the concept plan that I received with the agenda materials.
Yeah, I did bring it up to carry the name to get to you guys. It was put in there in 1914. I don't know if it was potentially there for where the Skahary Plank Road ultimately went in. But it, at this point, makes no sense because I own the land behind it. So that would be a reservation from myself. And, you know, I talked to Steve again today about it. And I guess the bottom line is it's just something that happened a long time ago that we'd like to remove it. But, you know, he just put it in because it's from the deed. But it literally stops in the middle of my property. So it's just one of those things that happened 106 years ago that makes no sense for today.
So I, you know, I think, you know, if it's in the title, I mean, it does sound as though it probably has no useful purpose anymore. For whatever the purpose was, if this was created back in 1914, you know, it may, you know, obviously have no value or usefulness at this point. But if it's, if it's in the title, you know, I think we have to, you know, address it in some manner now if it's, if we're going to be creating a subdivision plat. Because I think, you know, the idea is you're supposed to show all easements of record, you know, that affect the parcels.
That's our intention to deal with it now. And just, I mean, I guess I'm dealing with it from myself to myself since I'm the guy in the back who has the reservation. But Steve just said it was in the deed. I had to put it in there. And it's really just something that, you know, we'll handle it however you think it should be handled.
So is it a, and I think what my recommendation would be, you know, to the board is to, you know, ask you, the applicant, to provide us with some of this information just so we can kind of evaluate, you know, if or how it has to be addressed in the subdivision plat. It's a reservation of rights to the back, I'll say, kind of the back parcel owner. And it was for the benefit of that parcel. And you now, you know, own that back parcel. It may be a simple, you know, action to kind of eliminate that reservation or quitclaim whatever rights you have to it to yourself. But if it was a reservation or exception that went to the village or to another benefit, another parcel, I think we just have to figure that out so that we address it properly on the subdivision plat.
Yeah, it's obviously a very rare situation. He did say that, you know, as he looked back at the other deeds, it was in some other deeds that has subsequently, it's not there anymore. So whatever process they went through or didn't go through, it's been removed from some other deeds that are now no longer. But we acknowledge that it exists, and we're willing to handle it however it should be handled. It's just a different situation.
I think it disappeared like in 1990, right?
That's possible.
And it may, you know, and I'll say this, you know, it kind of disappearing from the title. It's, you know, it could be something where, you know, when a piece of property is conveyed and a parcel is described, the specific easement language is dropped out, or it is, you know, more general language is added, subject to any easements of record. You know, it doesn't mean that that reservation or exception has gone away just because it's not recited in later deeds. That's, you know, it's part of the title. You know, it stays part of the title until a formal action is taken to kind of extinguish whatever, you know, that property interest is, if it's a reservation or an exception.
Yeah, I'll have my attorney get in touch with you. And you guys can, I mean, it's way past my level of intelligence. I know that.
And I mean, if it's from 1914, I mean, I'm assuming it was, you know, there was some idea at the time that this would serve some useful purpose that, you know, fast forward 100 years, is no longer the case. But if it's, if it exists in the title, I think we need to clear it up before we can adopt the subdivision plat, you know, that doesn't show it. And my fear is, you know, with showing it from where, my understanding of where it would be located, you know, without that reservation or exception addressed, it could, it could make this front part undevelopable. So you've, you know, if it's a, and I don't, you know, without seeing the title, I don't know what it's a reservation or restriction for, you know, how it would or wouldn't affect it. But if it's down here in this front part where presumably we'd be doing the building, you know, we got to figure out, you know, if it's, number one, if it doesn't, you know, how to, you know, resolve it for the subdivision.
Yeah. Well, it only exists for me, is what I'm told.
That it.
I mean, it only exists in halfway, halfway through my property, it ends.
Yeah. And if it was, like I said, if it was, if it was put in the title for the front piece to benefit the back piece, and you own both of those now, it's probably very easy to resolve it. You know, if the, if the reservation was created for the benefit of some other parcel or the municipality, you know, it just may, you know, be, I mean, I wouldn't say, you know, more difficult. It's just, I think it would be a different process.
Yeah. Well, I'll get, I'll get George, my attorney, George Slingerland, can get connected with you and will do what's necessary, for sure.
Great. And if it's, if it's something that was done for the benefit of the village access, which back in 1914, probably not, then that would be something that the village would have to agree to give up, right?
Right.
Okay. And that would be the village board. That would have nothing to do with us, the planning board.
I was told from Steve today that it has nothing to do with the village. But that'll all iron itself out once legal gets involved.
Right. Okay.
Troy, you'll ask him to get in touch with me?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody on the board have any other questions for Troy at this time?
I do.
Barb?
Hi, Barb.
Hi, how are you, Troy? I may have missed this because I was late. But looking at the plan, I see in the front part, you're doing a two-story, two-family. What are you planning to build in the larger lot in the back?
Yeah, I think you did miss this. So there's really no back, as far as my intentions. I have a two-family to the left, and I'd like to build a single family to the right.
Oh, okay.
So it's not my intention to do anything in the back.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Lucy?
No.
Now, Barb, that two-family you know is existing right now. That's what's currently there at 130 Main. He's not building that. That's existing, that structure.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand that.
It's okay. That's why it takes a village.
Yeah. It also means I shouldn't be late. Okay, great. So we're doing a single family. Great. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Allison, are you good with um the restriction?
Yes, I think, you know, with the additional information that I'm assuming George is going to be able to provide for us, we'll be able to better understand what exactly this reservation and exception um was for, how it affects the title, what's the benefited parcel? Um, you know, from my perspective, that would tell us whether or not this is something that, you know, Troy can kind of straighten out on his own, if it's something that benefits one of his other parcels. If it's something that was created for the benefit of the village or there was an exception um specifically made to the village that may require some further village action to extinguish or resolve, then, you know, we'll talk about that. And if that's the case, it's something that the village board would have to consider, but the first step is just for, you know, me to kind of see the actual title documents to talk with George about it and get a handle on what exactly is the reservation in the title and how does it affect? Um, you know, this concept plan for the subdivision, or does it?
Okay, um. At this point, we would normally um set a public hearing. I'm just not sure that we wanted to do that before we have an answer to uh, the deed restriction. What do you think, Allison?
Um, I think, you know, I'm assuming if this is something that, you know, Troy and his attorney have already, you know, kind of looked into, then the documents that are should be relevant, you know, are readily accessible and it's something I'm hoping that, you know, you know, I know it's we're in the middle of the holidays, but maybe something George can get to me this week or next week so we can take a look at it. Um, you know, I don't know that there's, you know, I you could go ahead and and schedule the public hearing if if you're comfortable with that, with the idea that um we review that information. If there's any questions or any further follow-up that we need from the applicant, you will have the ability to leave the public hearing open. If you think additional information should be provided, that the public should then have an opportunity to review and comment on. Um, you know, but we had, do we have really a formal application submitted yet? We don't have an application with an EAF. I don't know that we would, yeah, so I think we have to wait for that anyway. Um, so I don't think we'd be scheduling the public hearing tonight, but certainly, you know, I think Troy, the quicker you can, you know, kind of get us whatever information you have so we can review it. Um, you know, the quicker than, you know, we can see it's a non-issue or or work out how to resolve the issue so that we can proceed with reviewing the application and scheduling the public hearing.
Yeah, no problem.
If it's going to be Albany County Planning Board, uh, you have to have it in by the eleventh January.
You have to have it to the Albany County Planning Board by the eleventh, not Troy has to have it to you by the eleventh. Okay.
I'll move it, I'll move at the proper pace.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, um, John, I'm going to go back to you. How are you feeling about this? You're on mute.
As long as he's going to build, you know, in the in the front, not a problem. If he's going to build them back, then I have more questions and that's a different animal.
Okay, I I I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable going forward and, you know, like I said, I I I know Troy, I know his work. I'm sure he'll dot his i's and cross his t's, so we got to trust him. Okay, um. Then I would say Troy, thank you. Um, well, yeah, I mean, you know, you know, you know, the things that you have to get to us before the hearing, so.
Yeah, I'll get just a few things and then we'll go to the next step.
Okay.
Probably tomorrow.
All right, awesome.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Troy.
All right, take care. Am I done?
Yes.
You are.
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, the uh next agenda item uh is to review the minutes from eleven nine. Did everybody have a chance to review those?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Your comments?
Scott, I gotta turn it off.
Uh, that would be me normally.
Okay, if nobody has any questions or comments, could I have a motion?
I I am, sorry. I was just going to say, have we heard anything more from Don Cropsey or Jeff? There were a lot of issues I felt that we needed answers for.
Yeah, no, we haven't heard another word that I know of. Lance, have you heard anything?
I spoke with Jeff last week. You know, and uh he had just come from a meeting with Don Cropsey. And he said uh that uh we'll have all the information that's necessary, you know, uh, for this particular project. So I said, okay, so I'm waiting to hear from Don. I mean, I'll reach out to him, but he isn't in the area, you know?
Um, I I have I have one comment. Um, I believe on the ninth, I um I asked Nagia about um and 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 this isn't, th- th- this is a small issue, but it bothers me. I asked her about um uh plastic waste coming out of the takeout operation. And I don't see that reflected in the minutes. Um, uh, and uh, but what I recall her saying at the time is that she was going to serve uh most of her stuff, most of her takeout stuff in uh Chinese paper type boxes. Do do we, do you recall that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, you know what?
I I went there uh on um uh Monday.
Um, you know, after she opened to the public for dinner and everything she served was in plastic, including styrofoam, which is, I believe, banned in Albany County.
Interesting.
So um, this is a comment.
Now, Simon, just just to say, um, we did have a problem with the recording um of that part of the meeting. That whole night was a little screwy as far as the recording and the video and everything was concerned. So I had taken notes, I gave my notes to Ginger, so you know, the fact that Ginger didn't include them in the minutes is my fault if I didn't jot that down, you know, so um, but we
But do you recall that conversation?
The meeting, we can amend the meeting to include that. And um, we can find, we can have Lance actually follow up with with Nadia regarding that.
Um, Deb, this is Ginger. I I remember hearing that and it may have been in the minutes of the meeting previous to that. Because I'm sure that I put it in the minutes. I'm pretty sure that I put in there, I remember that conversation, it said something like, oh yeah, my my daughter's really on this, we're going to use plastic and we're going to use, you know, the Chinese thing. I think it might be in the minutes for before that, which I think would have been October twenty eighth minutes, but I can go back and check that tomorrow and make sure.
Okay, all right.
Because, yeah, that's an important point.
It's it's, yeah, it's it's just that that, you know, there's a lot of garbage being created by, you know, by takeout and, you know, people are in a bind who who operate restaurants, but she said she was going to do something. And then she didn't. And and then she's also using something which I believe is banned in Albany County.
Styrofoam is.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I'll look into it.
Thank you.
I'll call her first thing in the morning like she used to do me.
All right.
She's probably up with her baby.
Rest of my day, you know, so.
Okay, if there are no, so Ginger, you're going to follow up on that?
Yes, I will look into that and then I will send you out and um I'll send out an email tomorrow. Um, and either confirm that it was in the minutes before that or then we'll, you know, if it was for this the meeting minutes from eleven nine, then we can add that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, could I have a motion then to approve the minutes of eleven nine with the condition that uh if that was missing, it will be added?
I make that motion.
To Barb? Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. Roll call, Ginger.
Okay, so uh Board Member Crusoe?
In favor.
Board Member Hit?
In favor.
Board Member Hukey?
In favor.
Board Member Molfelder?
In favor.
And Chairperson Hext?
In favor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or any other old business or new business that anyone wants to bring up?
Deb, I got a question.
You said that.
In the nine million meetings that we had regarding Stewarts, do anybody ever remember the fact regarding a sign for the front of Stewarts as a building? It's the only Stewarts I'm aware of that does not have a sign on it and I don't.
The building facade?
I did not have a sign. And it says Stewarts over the door. I guess I I I don't know what's the other term for it. I call it a sign. Um, you know, all the Stewarts logo they have over every door and every one of the buildings they're on? I mean, it's, I I don't really care. It's just, I found it odd when it was all up and I sat and I admired the building because we all did a great job. And I said, where where the heck is that Stewart sign? Or the term, whatever, whatever it is. So I don't remember talking about that.
My my memory was that they weren't going to do it. Um, that they were putting the scallops in there and a- all that, so they weren't going to then ruin that design with having the Stewart.
That's why they did the monument.
Okay, so that's later on, okay. All right. Well, that answers that question.
What monument?
That's what they call it.
Oh.
With the gas prices?
Yeah, on the corner there, that's what I call that sign, monument.
Oh, interesting, thank you.
It's interesting to note that one of the, one of the more vocal people in the paper that was against Stewarts actually came out and again in writing against Stewarts, almost paid compliment how nice it looked. Made me feel good.
Yes, he did.
Well, you guys did a righteous job. You really did. Guys and girls.
I think Stewarts did a wonderful job. When I looked at all the other Stewarts, I look at this one. I'm so completely happy with the lighting. That's was one of my big concerns and I think that the lighting is just enough to to show it off, but it's not glaring like the one I looked at up in Charleston, nowhere's near as bad. So I I was very happy with how it turned out.
Has anybody noticed the ads recently with Stewarts? I believe have been filmed in front of our Stewarts.
Really?
Take a look. It I I, there's a woman out front, you know, Stewarts person and talking about something and take a look, I'm almost positive it was filmed in front of our Stewarts.
Well, we we may have started something because the one in Eastburn, I guess, that they just bought, they're going up there, they bought one of the the stores that was up there and the supervisor said he wants to take some of the stuff that Stewarts did in Altima.
Oh, good.
Incorporated up there, so that's good.
Yes, we're trend centers.
I don't know about that. We're definitely setters.
Exactly, or sitters. Okay.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Allison, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
You're okay? I was going to just say, if Troy's attorney reaches out to me with that information, I'll forward it on to all the members of the board with, you know, a little summary, you know, based on my review.
If um, we should, you think Troy, you think uh George Slingerman will have your information or should I try to contact Troy or?
Um, you can, if you, you know, you can shoot him an email, make sure he has my information or just forward him uh, you know, my signature block from one of my uh emails.
Yeah, because Troy says he's going to do it, he does it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, they've already looked into it and so I'm assuming they're going to be able to provide us with the relevant deeds with an explanation of, you know, how they interpret it and we will just review that and make our own assessment based on the review of the deeds, but um, if it sounds kind of how he was describing it, it may be that um, you know, this reservation benefits a parcel that he also owns the back piece. Um, you know, but if it's something that was actually created for the benefit of the village, then, you know, we'll have to look at it from that perspective.
All right. Dean, you have anything? You're very quiet tonight. You're on mute.
Yes. Um, the thing I would suggest for consideration to John's point is a quick explanation about the the thirty feet for a keyhole lot that was to kind of cover all the zones that we have, because a lot of zones have hundred-foot minimum front yards, eighty-foot minimum front yards. So that was kind of a all-inclusive, what the board may want to consider as a recommendation next time we get around to changing the ordinance is maybe be more specific so that per zone, there's a limit on of a of the frontage for a keyhole lot. I'm not saying this is the right number, but for example, our ten, actually thirty feet is almost the same width as what's required. So do you make that twenty feet or fifteen feet for our ten? And then customize it for another for another couple of zones that may be different than the thirty and then say leave the thirty for anything that has a hundred foot setback. So it's a little more defining of the intent of a keyhole, which is really just access, which again wasn't the case here, um, but it'll make it maybe easier to look at a parcel when someone is trying to strictly try to access in a given zone. Because again, to John's point, thirty feet written down, it really isn't applicable to our ten. Thirty feet's basically the same size as a lot.
Well, a keyhole lot's not allowed use in an R ten, so if if if, you know, we we took it a step further, the maybe, I don't know, at some point, maybe it would help to add the use of a keyhole lot for an R ten and then we could further define the R ten keyhole restrictions or allowances.
Right, again, just considerations at both board levels to maybe refine some things like that. Um, the the most important thing to keep in mind going forward is Allison's point about um the average front yard in the district and the in the region. Uh, it's going to be key to define. Again, Troy will probably already figure it out before he res submits to find out where that is roughly in the thirty feet. Um, to really hold this parcel to having a building in that fifty-foot area.
Yeah, which is what I was trying to get him to agree to. Um, yeah, but uh, but, you know, again, that that those are conditions we can put on, you know, the um, the approval of of the subdivision plat, you know, that the here's where you can build, otherwise you have to go for a variance or you have to ask the village board to add a use to the schedule of a keyhole lot in an R ten. I I don't know.
It sounds like he has no choice. He would have to go for variance if someone wanted to build on the back part of that lot because it wouldn't comply with front yard requirements.
Right, I think if he came in with like a application for a building permit to put a house on that back piece, you know, you would flag it just as you would with any other, you know, application for a building permit that didn't meet a side yard setback or something, you would flag it as needing an area variance. Um, because I think it's pretty clear, you know, because, you know, this is not a keyhole lot and, you know, that strip adjoining um Main Street is developable. He is subject to the, you know, the area requirements in the R ten and that's included um, um, front yard setback provision.
Okay. Good suggestions. Thank you, Dean. Okay, if there's nothing else, Allison, thank you so much for joining. Um, I'm sorry for the reason that you were able to join, but
I know, I know, I I'm in quarantine here, but I feel good, so. Knock out.
But uh, thank you for joining. Thank you for writing that up and uh, you know, doing all the the research that you did on it really, really helped tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And like I said, I'll follow up um when they get me that additional information.
Okay, great. Okay, given that, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
John? Barb? Roll call please, Ginger.
Okay, so um, Board Member Crusoe?
In favor.
Board Member Hit?
In favor.
Board Member Hukey?
In favor.
Board Member Molfelder? Board Member Melfelder?
In favor.
Board Member Chairperson Hext?
In favor.
Great.
Okay, if we don't hear anything, we will, you know, I'll I'll keep everybody updated on whether or not we're going to have a meeting in January or not.
Happy New Year to everyone also.
Yes.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Hopefully it'll be better.
Let's hope.
On a happier note, towards the end of twenty twenty, for whatever value it is for you folks, my son just asked his girlfriend of ten years, they started in high school together, to marry him.
Yay.
Oh, yay.
Cool.
Oh, good.
Congratulations.
David, they they literally have been going out since her junior year in high school.
I know he's up.
Very well.
That's great.
Glad.
We'll see, it's already, twenty twenty-one is already starting out pretty well.
Yeah, that's exciting. Ellen, I'm very pleased. Good. He's a good kiddo. Great.
All right, guys, have a good night.
Take care.
Night, everyone.